This evening, we have with us students from our K-12 theater program and they are going to do the Pledge of Allegiance as well as be one of our True Blue Moments tonight. So if I could have Ms. Schmidt and her students come up for the pledge. Kaylee, you want to grab them?
Yeah.
Come on up. All the way up to the front. We're going to have you stand in front of the table here. And I'm going to introduce everyone. First, from our K-12 theater program, we have Eleanor Schmidt, who leads our students. We have Rachel Tavano, Haley Fortuna, Noah Schroeder, Caitlin Holden, Isabella Cracchiolo, Coral Hall, Jacob Posito, and Joseph Posito. Did I get everybody? Okay. At this time, if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to have you guys back up in a few minutes for our True Blue Moment. Next is our mission statement. Sarah?
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. We will call. Ryan?
Here.
David?
Here.
Tracy?
Here.
Kyle?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
And myself. We have four.
Okay, next would be a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
It's been moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, motion would be in order to approve the consented agenda items as presented.
It's a move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is our True Blue Moment. It is a portion of our meeting that we take to highlight and showcase great things that are happening in our district. And this evening, we have two True Blue Moments. We will start with the first one, which is our School Lunch Hero Food Service Recognitions, and we have Sue Evans.
Thank you for being here. I'm going to give you a little update about the school meals program. The National School Lunch Program was established in 1946 by the Department of Defense. The intent of the program was to provide nourishing meals for our youth because they were experiencing with drafting. Youngsters said they weren't physically fit because of malnutrition during the depression, so they brought meals to schools so that students could have at least two healthy meals a day. Between 1946 and 2016, we served over 249 billion meals. The Child Nutrition Act is reauthorized every five years by Congress. The latest nutritional requirements came about as part of the Health and Learning for Kids Act of 2010. The Child Nutrition Act is reauthorized every five years. The last authorization was due in September 2015. There were bills passed in both the Senate and the House committees last spring. However, with the election, those bills died without going to vote, and we have yet to have any progress with the new Congress. The House bill can take legislation to establish a block grant. This is not something that school nutrition professionals feel is a good idea for school meals. It will actually reduce funding. And just the impact to Richmond year-to-date would be a loss of over $38,000. So just some brief information about block grants, but if you hear anything about block grants, it's not a good thing and you don't want it. The most recent thing that came out was on May 1st, the Secretary of Agriculture signed a proclamation that directed USDA to provide flexibility for school food authorities, and that would be in the form of additional options for whole grains and until those options are in place, to continue to allow states to grant exemptions for items that are unacceptable to students. We currently have three exemptions for items that we serve in our school meals program. We don't know what additional options means. We won't know anything probably till the middle of 17, 18 school year. It also delayed the implementation of the Target 2 sodium reductions till 2020. So those were set to go into effect July 1st, and they delayed that implementation to 2020. They also stated that they would allow 1% flavored milk to be served in schools. Currently, any flavored milk has to be fat-free. Comparing State of Michigan participation to pre-Health 300 Free Kids Act, which was the 11-12 school year, 12-13 was the first year of the phased-in requirements. If you look at participation between '15, '16, and '11, '12 for the State of Michigan, total breakfasts are up overall, but if you see, you know, paid breakfasts are down, and also paid lunches continue to decline since the implementation. Richmond schools, we have just the opposite here. Our free breakfast and lunch are down while our paid and reduced participation is up. The next several slides are detailed data year, '16-'17 compared to '15-'16 month-to-month. I'm just going to forward to the summary page. If you have questions about those details, you know, feel free to contact me either by phone or email. Year-to-date, '15-'16 to '16-'17, we are overall up total revenue 2.52%. It's a little hard to compare this year to last year because we will have more school days this year. We have more half-days and more full-days of school. So we would expect that revenue would be up just based on the fact that we're serving more meals because of the additional school days. However, you know, if you look at the lunch percentages over here for free, reduced, and full pay, we are up significantly more than would be accounted for just the extra school days. So that's good news. Some of the challenges we face in the school meals program is that, you know, we have breakfast participation challenges. We'd like to see more students eating breakfast. It's a really important meal, especially if they're not eating anything in the morning and they don't have anything till lunchtime. If they're in sea lunch at the high school, they've gone over half their day with no nutrition for their brain, and it's really, you know, they're not maximizing their learning potential by following that process. So we have our highest loss of participation around star-free students, which is mind-boggling to me because it doesn't cost them anything, but that's the case. And again, you know, we struggle at the middle-school level. It's not cool at that age level to eat breakfast, much less to eat breakfast in the cafeteria. And just in time and later, riding students don't have any options for breakfast at the middle-school and the elementary school. In the high school, we have the extended breakfast hours until 10 o'clock, so if they arrive late, they can stop in and grab something and take it to the classroom with them. Programs that help increase participation, we do promotions, participation drawings, Lucky Trade Day at the elementary taste tests. I've purchased some signage for the middle-school that will advertise the breakfast service so kids will know that it's there. And we also bought a new toaster for the middle-school this year to allow more diverse breakfast offerings. Some programs that we consider that help increase participation that also have a cost associated with them, so you have to calculate the trade-off, allowing students to take breakfast to the classroom, serving breakfast in the classroom, and then universal breakfast would make free breakfast available to all students. Successes in our program, we have new signage at the middle-school this year, and we are planning it for the high school next year. We have new fast food thermometers at all the buildings, a new toaster at the middle-school. We're in the process of looking at a new oven for the elementary school, new floor mats and managed storage rack at the elementary. We piloted a hot beverage program at the high school. We're hoping that we'll be able to bring that back once the county-wide bid is in place. And we were asked to participate in a plate-based study by the MSU Extension Service. We have steady lunch participation and some grants that we got this year. We've got $500 for each building, smarter lunch and site assessments. Our third year, participating in the USDA Fresh Produce Pilot, which brings us cases of fresh produce for a $2.64 delivery price versus a case of raw meat commercially last week was $72. So quite a cost savings for us by being part of that pilot program. In our third year, receiving education and training grants from the School Nutrition Association of Michigan. The School Nutrition Association provides support for school nutrition professionals. It's a national organization. We also have a state affiliate organization. They do conferences, and, you know, in the state, we have local chapters, focus groups, and committees that define best practices, provide technical assistance, and growth in leadership opportunities for school nutrition professionals. Additional things that I'm doing, working right now on developing the Culinary Arts CTE curriculum for next year. I talked to Mrs. Schad. Last week, we have 35 students signed up, so that's pretty exciting.
Wow.
I was asked to be, or I'm sorry, for the School Nutrition Association. I've attended the last two annual conferences in July, and this year I will be a breakout session presenter. I was asked to be a mentor for the MTE 18 training last fall, and I presented a breakout session at last year's MTE conference. I'll be attending that again this year. And I've done quite a bit for the School Nutrition Association of Michigan as well, and I'll be a breakout session presenter at their fall conference this year. So if we have any questions, we can take those now, or you can contact me later if you, you know, have been looking over the data and you have some questions that come up. So now I'd like to do the staff recognitions for the food service program. Friday, May 5th was School Lunch Hero Day, and it's a day set aside to recognize the contributions that food service staff members make to the educational success of students all over the country. Staff members that provide nutritional services typically are members of the school community and start as substitute workers filling in for sick and personal time off for regular staff members. I'd like to play a video from the author of the school, I'm sorry, the Lunch Lady Hero Tells you a little bit about how he came up with Lunch Lady Hero Day.
School Lunch Hero Day is a day where kids nationwide can express their gratitude to their school's lunch staff who work tirelessly on a daily basis to provide health food meals. My Lunch Lady recitals were inspired by a chance encounter I had with my childhood school nutrition professional. No comment much that meant to her. I found it a day where kids could exercise their own creativity to celebrate the men and women working in our school cafeterias. Via social media, I have seen folks celebrating School Lunch Hero Day across the country, and they're all finding their own unique ways to celebrate. I have seen people make thank-you cards that look like hamburgers, thank-you cards that look like pizza, and I'm just simply amazed by all of these creative ideas our kids are coming up with.
We took milk cartons, we put the Lunch Lady's faces on them, and put flowers in them.
There was so many things. They made pizza out of paper. One little girl, she wrote a poem. It was just, just gets to you hard.
I was fascinated to learn more about how these folks prepare our children's school lunches. These folks are working really hard to not only provide healthy meals, but educate our children on a healthy eating lifestyle.
Very often, the school nutrition staff have a daily basis that children see when they're working. So it's extremely important that the relationship between the children and our school cafeteria staff is a very positive one.
School Lunch Hero Day is a wonderful public acknowledgement of the school nutrition staff and the role they play every day to benefit students from their healthy meals in the cafeteria and after they go to the classroom.
These children truly love our Lunch Ladies and really appreciate them.
Before a child can learn in their classroom, they need to be confident. Part of that confidence comes from having a full belly. If our kids aren't full, they're not going to learn. So our school nutritionists are on the front line of filling those bellies so our nation's kids can learn, and that's a pretty superhero quality to have. Celebrate School Lunch Hero Day on the first Friday of May, and visit schoollunchheroaday.com for more information and downloadable activities.
At this time, I'd like to recognize our food service staff members who do a great job. I would like to recognize our food service staff members who do a great job every day providing for the care and feeding of our students. When I call your name, please come forward to accept your appreciation award. Michelle Girard. Michelle began her food service career with Richmond Community Schools on 2/13/2002. She is currently the head cook at Lee Elementary School responsible for forecasting, ordering, meal prep, and service. Michelle's daughter Ella attends 7th grade at Richmond Middle School. Her grandson Betsy attends 1st grade at Lee Elementary School, and her daughter Jessica and son Ryan are both alumni at Richmond Community Schools. Jessica is also a caregiver with the Early Childhood Learning Center at Lee Elementary. Debbie Osterling. Debbie began her food service career with Richmond Community Schools on 4/1/2005. She is currently an assistant cook at Richmond Middle School responsible for meal prep and sales. Debbie's daughter Jordan graduated from Richmond Schools in 2016. Here comes Debbie. Pam Manorazzi. Pam began her food service career with Richmond Community Schools on 8/23/2005. She is currently the head cook at Richmond High School responsible for forecasting, ordering, and meal prep. Pam's son Jesse graduated from Richmond Community Schools in 2012. Tammy Calamenny. Tammy couldn't be here tonight, but Tammy began her food service career with Richmond Community Schools on 9/5/2012. She is currently an assistant cook at Lee Elementary School responsible for meal prep and sales. Tammy's son Ryan graduated from Richmond Schools in 2013, and her daughter Caitlin graduated in 2010. Judy Murphy. Judy began her food service career with Richmond Schools on 9/18/2012. She is currently an assistant cook serving on the hot entree line at Richmond High School responsible for meal prep and service. Judy's son James graduated from Richmond Community Schools in 2008. Dana Trobley. Dana couldn't be here tonight, but she began her food service career with Richmond Schools on 9/8/2014. She is currently an assistant cook at Richmond High School responsible for backing up the head cook and meal prep and sales. Dana's son Kyle attends 7th grade at Richmond Middle School. Her son Robert is a senior at Richmond High School, and her son Brad graduated in 2015. Sandra Richards. Sandra began her food service career with Richmond Community Schools on 9/8/2014. She is currently an assistant cook serving on the hot entree line at Richmond Middle School responsible for meal prep and student service. She also makes the food service deliveries between the buildings. Sandra's daughter Alyssa attends 8th grade at Richmond Middle School, and her son Nicholas attends 10th grade at Richmond High School. Kathy Guinea. Kathy began her food service career with Richmond Community Schools on 9/8/2015. She is currently the head cook at Richmond Middle School responsible for forecasting, ordering, and meal prep. Kathy's son Nathan attends 5th grade, and her daughter Caitlin attends 7th grade at Richmond Middle School, and her daughter Rebecca is a senior at Richmond High School. Norma Bureau. Norma began her food service career with Richmond Schools on 9/9/2015. She is currently an assistant cook at Richmond Middle School responsible for backing up the head cook and meal prep and sales. Norma's son Joseph attends 4th grade at Lee Elementary. Her daughter Natalie attends 8th grade at Richmond Middle School, and her daughter Sabrina graduated in 2013. Dawn Shear. Dawn began her food service career with Richmond Community Schools on 9/26/2016. She is currently an assistant cook at Richmond High School responsible for meal prep and sales. Dawn's son Spencer attends 4th grade at Lee Elementary, and her son Brandon attends 7th grade at Richmond Middle School. Jackie Waszkiewicz. Jackie began her food service career with Richmond Community Schools on 11/28/2016. She is an assistant cook serving on the sandwich line at Richmond Middle School responsible for meal prep and service. Jackie moved into the district after raising her family, but many of our students call her grandma. I would also like to mention our substitute staff Carol Perrinello, Jamie Moore, Amber Johnson, and Roseanne Chasm. All regular staff members hold serve-safe food safety certification and receive over six hours of professional development training each school year. I would like to thank all our food service staff and substitute workers for the care and support they provide to Richmond students on a daily basis. Good nutrition is the cornerstone for learning, and these ladies regularly go above and beyond to ensure that healthy appetizing meals are available to our students every day. Thank you Lunch Lady Heroes for all that you do. Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Norma. Especially thinking Kathy and her cookies too. Family heckling you?
Pardon me?
Your family's heckling you? Your family is heckling you?
Oh, thanks, boy. Thanks, boy.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you again to the ladies in the one room. They are really, really important to the kids, and we do appreciate all that they do for us. So let's thank them. Our next True Blue Moment, come on up, is our K-12 theater program. Have you not followed behind you all of them?
I was going to call them up. They can, they can.
I just thought maybe they were leaving you by yourself.
All right. Hello, everyone. I'm Eleanor Schmidt. I think they announced me earlier, but I'll say it again. So this year was a new era for theater at Richmond. We started the first K-12 theater program, which is a huge feat for us to tackle. But we did it, and we did it well, and it's been a great success with every show that we've done thus far. So this past fall, we did Wella Lee's drama program. So this was open to all K-4th grade students, and we did American Symbols, which is still an educational show, and it's very fun. It was very patriotic, and the kids got to explore the origin, nature, and significance of many of the primary symbols in U.S. history today. We had a total of 23 students participate in the show, which I thought for a first-year show was great. It was a great number, very easy to manage, and they all did a wonderful job. We met three times a week right after school for an hour for about two months, and we put it all together. They learned their songs, their dances, their blocking, their lines, and they all made it look super easy come show night for everybody that was watching. Another thing that we did specifically with the Lee School and the middle-school is I thought we would put our high schoolers to the test. So we gave them more responsibility to learn from a production standpoint. So we had student directors, music directors, and choreographers, and stage managers, as well as student tech. This was just for them to see not just the performing aspect that they're used to, but to see behind the scenes, because that could be something down the road that might interest them, whether it's tech, or directing, or doing music in the long run. And for just the Wella Lee, I have a few people, students, here to talk about their experience. Can I have Jacob Posito come up first? I don't know if he got a little stool. Don't worry, Joseph. We're going to get you a chair.
The only time I give you permission is to stay on a chair.
All right. The floor is yours, sir. You want your script?
Maybe.
Maybe?
The American Symbols on Parade musical was a great experience, and I hope that they continue this program. I had a lot of fun practicing for the show. I really enjoyed American Symbols on Parade. It was an educational musical, and the directors of the show are very nice. This is a very fun program, and I hope that it will be continued.
Next, we're going to hear from Joseph, who was also in American Symbols.
The American Symbols on Parade play was a very good experience for me. I liked it because it was fun and educational, and, well, at first, I was kind of afraid because I've never done it. It was my first play I've ever done in front of real people, besides my parents. So when I did it, it felt good, and I felt like, and it made me feel like I want to keep doing this. I want to be an actor. And the people who, and the directors, like my brother said, they were very nice. I liked how they helped out, and it made me feel good when I was practicing. And the songs were very nice, and I learned a lot about the government and the national documents and all that. So that's how I feel about American Symbols. Thank you.
And lastly, for American Symbols, we're going to have Noah Schroeder, who was our student director for the show and who did a superb job with the kids, and they really all love him.
I don't get to stand on the chair, too. When Eleanor first brought up the idea to me of directing American Symbols on Parade, I really had no idea what to come of it or what to think of it. I thought it would be a great idea because history is personally one of my favorite subjects in school, and I think it's important that the kids today now learn about these things that have happened in the past and why they're so important today. So, and I'm potentially going to school for performing arts and directing and whatnot, so I thought this would be a perfect opportunity to get into directing and seeing what I can do. So when we had our auditions, we had a great turnout. All the kids were phenomenal. One thing I liked about the show was we gave everybody a chance to be in the limelight, so nobody was really left out. And needless to say, these kids, or these actors, have done a phenomenal job with how they were on stage. It was such an honor to be directing this show, and I just, that night, it was possibly one of the greatest nights I could have ever thought of ever having. I'm speechless. Even now, I'm just in shock of how much fun that process was and how I can't wait to continue it in the future.
So American Symbols was a really great turnout for the audience, for all the parents. Everybody seemed to really enjoy it, and the kids got to learn something about history while linking it to performing arts, which I think is very important, and it will help them in the long run. We also had our Richmond Middle School drama program. So this was this past spring. We did Schoolhouse Rock Live, which I'm sure many of you probably remember, the TV show Schoolhouse Rock. So it's also very educational, but it's fun. It's fun for the kids to learn the dances and the music and be learning about education in the process and whatever, you know, whether it's history or English or whatnot. It's done in a fun environment, so it's a lot more enjoyable for them. So again, we had 30 students participate in the show, and they met three times a week for an hour after school. Again, we rehearsed for about a month and a half to two months total preparation time, and we also gave high schoolers the chance to student-direct and music-direct this. So we do have several students here today that want to talk about their experience. First up, I'm going to have Caitlin Holden, who's an 8th grader at Richmond Middle School. She was one of our leads in the show. She played Tammy, or Tom.
Hi, I'm Caitlin. In Schoolhouse Rock, as I said, I played Tammy, which is a lead role, but a lot of the songs and a lot of the dances were very informative, like, infor-
Informative?
Thank you, informative. I put all this hard effort into this awesome special day. I love hearing the crowd cheering for us. I went to see Thoroughly Modern Millie and as I was watching, I thought to myself, man, I can't wait to be a part of that. And I'm here today, thanks to the theater program. I get to see how exciting a Board of Education meeting is. Thank you for your time.
And last, on Schoolhouse Rock, we're gonna hear from Haley Fortuna, who was our music director for the middle school show, as well as American Symbols.
Hi, Schoolhouse Rock was actually one of the first shows I ever did when I was about 11 years old. So when I had the opportunity to be a part of the production process, behind-the-scenes type stuff, and give younger kids the same opportunity I had, I was really excited about that. I'm actually kinda tearing up after hearing them all talk about it. Because theater really is a great thing and it's really great to know that I, along with some of my peers, have inspired the kids to, just for that love of theater, even if it wasn't their first show, just to make a good experience, because it really was a lot of fun and it's just, they do, it's crazy what they're capable of doing. Like, they're all so talented and it's really cool to get to see them put all that hard work together and it's really, it's an honor to be able to just watch them grow.
So Schoolhouse Rock went perfectly. Didn't have any hiccups. It went really well. The turnout was great and the reception from the audience and parents was just amazing. They really enjoyed it and it was really great to be a part of it and allow that to happen. Moving on, so our Fall Play, we did Play On. Play On, it tells a hilarious story of a theater group trying desperately to put on a play in spite of a maddening interference from a haughty author who keeps revising the script. So this was a comedy. It was like a mystery slash comedy, so it's a play within a play. Surprisingly, we had like 20 to, I think, I think the total was like 20 students auditioned for this straight show, which was extremely awesome, because I was an expecting lot, because we're a new program. I didn't think we would have such a big turnout, but we did. And the cast really only required 14, so we had to turn a lot of them away, but I opened it up for them to work backstage and to help with that, which they really appreciated. And it was a great turnout, as far as like for a straight show goes. Normally, you don't have as big of houses for musicals, but we had quite a big turnout in our houses and the kids worked so hard and it was, they had to learn, we had to have dialect days for them to learn the standard British accent for their play within the play, so that was fun. And overall, it was just a, for me, it was a great experience, because I did Play On 10 years ago at this very school, on that same stage. So it was really, really nice to bring it home and start this new program off with something that, you know, was like one of the first shows I ever did. So I really, really enjoyed it. For us, so here's some pictures, as you can see, the set was single, but we had to do a lot of different props. As you can see, a lot of similar faces that were already up here, Haley and Noah. And then, we also, last fall, we got to take a field trip to the Fisher's, so we opened up to our drama kids and we got to go to the Fisher and see Fun Home, which is a Tony-winning musical. It was a great experience. The kids got to see the professional side of theater and really just all the magic that can happen just with technology and on the stage and when you have the technique and training, you know, the possibilities are really endless. And that was a really fun time and the kids really, really enjoyed it. Brings us to Thoroughly Modern Millie. So Thoroughly Modern Millie just went up about two weeks ago. The kids worked for like two and a half months. It was, it was a very ambitious first musical to do because it is very time-consuming. So it takes you back to 1922, when, you know, the height of the Jazz Age in New York City, when this sort of country farm girl, Millie Dilmot, makes her way to the Big Apple and tries to become modern and hip and tries to find a job and look for love in all their own areas. So we had about, a total of about 30 kids behind the scenes and onstage for the show, which was a great amount for a musical. And they all did a superb job. Costume, set, the singing, the dancing, all of it was amazing. We had pre-workshops in December and January prior to auditions, so that the kids could learn, you know, jazz and tap, since tapping was gonna be a big part of the show. And then, it really went great. Auditions, it was very difficult to choose, because we have a big pool of talent right now at Richmond High School and it made my job extremely difficult trying to narrow it down to just one person per character. So they all did a fantastic job. So here's some pictures. These are our graduating seniors that will be leaving us this year. And then this was the cast of Thoroughly Modern Millie. They all did a wonderful job and brought me to tears. I loved it. Moving on to Richmond's Forensics Team. So Richmond Forensics Team, it goes through the Michigan Interscholastic Forensics Association. So this is, it's basically competitive theater in a nutshell. So students can choose broadcasting, they can do dramatic interpretation, they can do duo scenes, they can do extemporaneous speaking, impromptu, informative, they can do multiples, which is like a scene from a musical or a play with multiple actors. They can do oratory, poetry, prose, sales speaking, and storytelling. This year was a small year, but for our first-year team, it was a great size. So we had six students total in the forensics team. And really, they exceeded all my expectations. It went extremely well this year. So our first Invitational was at Skyline High School. So these are put on by the individual schools. So our kids were competing not only against BCD schools, but Class A schools as well. So Anna Maxwell made it to the semifinals in prose and placed 12th. Olivia Wofford and Emily Nikter made it to the semifinals in duo and placed 7th. Rachel Tavano made it to the finals in poetry and placed 6th. And then, we had our Maple Invitational on February 4th, where Rachel Tavano made it to finals in poetry and placed 5th. Anna Maxwell made it to semis and placed in 10th in prose. And Haley Fortuna made it to semifinals in storytelling and placed in 10th overall. And then we also, so we went to several Invitationals. Our third one that we went to was Birch Run, where Rachel Tavano took 8th in poetry. Haley took 15th in storytelling and Daniel took 14th, Daniel Segwin took 14th in dramatic interpretation. Then they also host novice states. So novice states is for any student's first-year forensics. So this is their first year ever doing forensics, where we did very well here. So Rachel Tavano took 3rd place in poetry for novice states. Anna Maxwell took 3rd place in prose. And then Haley Fortuna was the 1st place storytelling novice state champion. And because of how well our kids did that day with scoring, we took home a 2nd place team trophy for Richmond High School. So everybody, so Daniel Segwin, Emily Nikter, Rachel Tavano, Anna Maxwell, and Haley Fortuna all contributed to us winning that team trophy that took 2nd place. We had regionals at Henry Ford II on March 30th, where we competed against BCD schools. Emily Nikter took 1st place in dramatic interpretation. Daniel Segwin took 3rd in dramatic interpretation. Rachel Tavano took 1st place in poetry. Anna Maxwell took 1st place in prose. Ashley Anderson took 2nd place in prose. And Haley Fortuna took 2nd place in storytelling. I wrote prose, but it was storytelling. So they all qualified to go to states at Eastern Michigan University because of this, because of regionals. So on April 28th and then on the 29th, Eastern Michigan University hosted the Forensics States. So Emily Nikter and Daniel Segwin both qualified and went to semifinals and placed 9th and 11th in the state, which was really awesome, especially for a first-year team. None of these kids knew what forensics was, you know, besides the beginning of the school year. Just to see how much they've grown and then how much they've learned has been astronomical. It's been a great experience, not just for me as a coach, but all around, like, meeting all the different schools. And then, I think it's great, too, going to these Invitationals, because you're not just put up against like BCD schools, you're put up against Class A schools that have much more resources and time to put towards their students. And it's just been amazing to see where our kids fall and how they exceed expectations and it's been an amazing experience. And with that, I'm gonna have Haley Fortuna, Rachel Tavano, and Noah Schroder come up and talk about their experiences with the high school programs. I'll put it on a cool picture. So first up, we'll have Rachel Tavano.
This is my first year in high school, obviously, I'm a freshman. So coming in as a freshman into the theater program was very new, because I had always been in the community theater here at The Odd. And that was a, it started off as just a hobby for me, but it seemed to grow into this passion that I didn't know I had until I had met all these people that inspired me and, like Eleanor, or my other director Craig, or anybody who had helped out and put all their time and, you know, care into trying to make this program our own. And so, coming into this year was very exciting for me, because I got to experience a whole new window of opportunity with my new friends that I meet and just bigger production value and it's very interesting. And so, with that adding forensics, too, it was interesting to me, because I, it wasn't gonna be the, you know, I wasn't gonna be the only one doing forensics for the first time. It was everyone. And forensics is interesting, because it takes the theatrical side of it in theater and it takes the, what's the word? Public speaking part, too. So it puts them both together, so it's like a learning experience as well as just something to put your passions into. So I was in poetry event, so I got to, I took five different poems and put them all into one piece and performed them. And it was interesting, because I got to be this character and at the same time, it was a small group of people, so it was like more of an intimate thing. So it was like this, me talking in front of a group of people, except much less, and I was judged. So it was a whole new thing for me. And, I don't know, just coming into the high school program especially, has really opened up my eyes to a lot of different things. Because even aside from the theatrical part and the passion that I have for this, the space that I get to meet new people, it's just a nice place to be. It's a nice place to go to and even if you feel like you don't have anyone else or anything like that, just if you feel low, it's a good place to be. It's very fulfilling for me and it's always been, it seems.
And Rachel's done an outstanding job in forensics. She was also in Play On as well. She was our lead and she was the direct, she played the director within the play within play and I think she channeled me a little bit, but I'm not gonna hold her to it. She did an amazing job and I couldn't be more proud of her. Next up, I'm gonna have Haley Fortuna speak, who's been a part of just about everything in the high school.
I don't think I can top the poetic way Rachel Tavano just speaks. There's just something about her, you just wanna listen to her when she talks. But this year was really, really neat, because I helped out with the elementary school show and the middle school show, as I spoke about earlier. And then I also was in the Fall Show and the Musical and Forensics. So I was really, really busy, but I learned something different from all of them, which was really neat. Like, with the elementary school and the middle school show, it was neat to watch these kids and put that inspiration in them, like I had said earlier. And then, Fall Show was neat, because it was more of an intimate environment with only a 14-person cast. So that was a different experience. And then the Musical was, everybody was working hard and working together and, like Eleanor said, we started in December. We went up in April, so everyone was just putting it all in the entire time. But forensics was really neat and I wanna talk about that a little bit longer than other things, because that was a new, because that was a new experience for me, as well as everybody else. And it was cool, because it put like the competition of sports into theater, and I've been a part of sports teams, too. So it was just, it was weird, but I liked it, because you got to, you worked hard on this piece and you went in, you competed, and you got scored, and you got to see other pieces. And honestly, the best part about forensics probably was all the camaraderie and getting to meet all these kids from all these different schools that have the same interests as you. And I think my favorite part about forensics was waiting for our scores to come in, when we all would just talk and like, we played this game with this water bottle one time and it was so cool. You just had to throw the water bottle and catch, I don't know why we made that fun, but it was. So I guess, I'm really happy with how the theater program turned out this year, so.
Okay, and last up to talk about the high school theater program is Noah Schroder, which I'll go back to. Picture of him.
I'm glad you had me go last, because I literally have a lot to say and they would have not, had nothing to say. Okay. So in 2014, Jason Applegate, who was our previous choir director, had left Richmond High School to be a teacher at Sasa in Saginaw. And that really took a toll on the theater program and from there, we had constant director shifting in and out of the position. And last year, we had been told that The Odd, or the Southeast Michigan Youth Theater, whatever you wanna call it, is going to be taking over the theater program here in Richmond High School. I had, when I found out about that, I was in shock and disbelief, because I'm, in some ways, it's like, it's better to stay in their own boundaries. That makes any sense? No offense. But I, needless to say, that has possibly been the greatest decision that this theater program has come on to. These plays that we have done this year have been not only the most fun I've had in theater and at all, I've been doing theater for eight years, so this is possibly been one of my favorite years to do theater, because I've been like challenged, whereas before, I've been given simple roles, just saying, just talking and doing regular blocking. But Play On, like she said, I had to practice dialect, which was hard, because I can only speak in an Irish accent and I can't do British, but... And one dialect she didn't mention is the fact that I had to learn Chinese for a show. So that was also difficult. But needless to say, the challenge made it even more fun for me and made... And then fall show was neat because it was more of an intimate environment with only a 14-person cast. So that was a different experience. And then the musical was, everybody was working hard and working together. And like Eleanor said, we started in December, we went up in April, so everyone was just putting it all in the entire time. But forensics was really neat and I wanna talk about that a little bit longer than other things because that was a new, because that was a new experience for me as well as everybody else. And it was cool because it put like the competition of sports into theater and I've been a part of sports teams too. So it was just, it was weird, but I liked it. Because you got to, you worked hard on this piece and you went in, you competed, and you got scored, and you got to see other pieces. And honestly, the best part about forensics probably was all the camaraderie and getting to meet all these kids from all these different schools that have the same interests as you. And I think my favorite part about forensics was waiting for our scores to come in when we all would just talk and like, we played this game with this water bottle one time and it was so cool. You just had to throw the water bottle and catch, I don't know why we made that fun, but it was. So I guess I'm really happy with how the theater program turned out this year, so.
Okay, and last up to talk about the high school theater program is Noah Schroder. I'll go back to picture of him.
I'm glad you had me go last because I literally have a lot to say and they would've not, had nothing to say. So in 2014, Jason Applegate, who was our previous choir director, had left Richmond High School to be a teacher at SAG-AF, at SASSA in Saginaw. And that really took a toll on our theater program and from there, we had constant directors shifting in and out of the position. And last year, we had been told that The Odd or the Southeast Michigan Youth Theater, whatever you wanna call it, is going to be taking over the theater program here in Richmond High School. I had, when I found out about that, I was in shock and disbelief because I'm, in some ways, it's like it's better to stay in their own boundaries. If that makes any sense, no offense. But I, needless to say, that has possibly been the greatest decision that this theater program has come onto. These plays that we have done this year have been not only the most fun I've had in theater and at all, I've been doing theater for eight years, so this is possibly been one of my favorite years to do theater. Because I've been like challenged, whereas before I've been given simple roles, just saying, just talking and doing regular blocking. But Play On, like she said, I had to practice dialect, which was hard because I can only speak in an Irish accent, I can't do British, but. And one dialect she didn't mention is the fact that I had to learn Chinese for a show. So that was also difficult. But needless to say, the challenge made it even more fun for me and made the experience even more worth it. Because if I hadn't had that challenge, it would've just been the same old show over and over again. And I personally hate repetition. And needless to say, our theater program has had constant support ever since The Odd has come in. We've even had our amazing superintendent perform a show with us, which honestly, if he trusts the Southeast Michigan Youth Theater with our program to, enough to be in our show, I think that says numbers about what will come in the future. I thoroughly believe that this year has been the greatest year for Richmond High School ever since Applegate has left and it's only going to get better from here. I, when, previous seniors have left high school during their last show, they, every, they always stop just what they're doing and just start crying at the end of the last show. I've never done that, I've, it's just because nothing has felt different to me. Saturday night after Thoroughly Modern Milli, I was bawling my eyes out because I did not want this show to end, I did not want my year to come to a close. I was genuinely going to miss these friends I've made, this family we've created and I really am gonna miss Eleanor. She, she has, out of, she has given me every single opportunity I've ever had this year and that has only prepared me even more for the future. And I am beyond grateful for her. And this whole program has just been an amazing decision and I can only, I could speak more about it, but I feel like I'm taking away too much time, so just, when this program came in, I wanted nothing of it. When I came, when I came here, I wanted everything to do with it. It needs to stay, to say the least.
Yes, Noah, actually at The Odd, the Southeast Michigan Youth Theater, we actually started an award two years ago called the Schroder Award specifically for Noah, because he's the kid that will be there early and late and help with whatever needs to be done. So, thank you, as I get emotional. So that is sort of our presentation for the, how the K through 12 theater program has went this year. Do I have any questions or anything? No? Okay, then that's that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think I'm staying up here.
And as a board, it makes us really, really happy to see that enthusiasm and see what has happened this year when we decided to do the K-12 program. So thank you and thank you to the students too. We really appreciate all of the work that you guys do as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll let her go away. We'll move on to the presentations over the trip for MSCI Forensic Convention in Mackinac Island.
Yes. So the forensics, they have, I guess it's a thing that they do in Mackinac Island. The kids get to go for three nights in four days. They get to stay at the Grand Hotel, which is pretty swanky, pretty awesome for them. So it's put on through MIFSA and then for us to be able to go, I have to be a Registered Michigan Speech Coach, which I am. So it gives the kids the opportunity to go to Mackinac. And what they will do there is they'll basically be at the Grand Hotel the entire duration of the time because they'll be having competitions going on. So this, normally all throughout the year, all the competitions, it's very serious, you know, kids get to have fun or whatever, but the pieces are very much like things that are happening with them in school, they're serious tones, they're deep. Whereas Mackinac is sort of light and fun and the kids get to sort of end the year on a ni, nice bright happy note. And they get to have like a really fun categories that they normally wouldn't be able to do for regular speech competition. So with this, we would be leaving on May 18th, which would be next Thursday, and we would be going straight to Mackinac and taking and staying at the Grand Hotel, we'd be checking in, and then we leave Sunday morning after breakfast. It's a great opportunity for the kids because they also are offering workshops for public speaking and theatrical aspects that the kids can also take when they're not competing against other students. So again, the students that will be attending is the entire forensics team at Richmond and then the kids that will already be there, other schools going, are will be Class A, BCD schools as well. So they'll be, again, be going against kids from all over Michigan. It's sort of, I think, a really nice opportunity for the kids because not only are they competing, but they get to take workshops and then prepare themselves for next year. As far as cost goes, the total trip is $450. And I got with several mothers that children are on the forensics team and they put together a fundraiser to try to raise money to potentially have the kids go. We did meet our mark, which was enough to take off $150 per kid so that the cost would only be $300. So the kids will be paying $300 out of pocket and then with our fundraiser, we'll be covering 150 of it, which makes it a little bit more able for parents to afford to allow their kids to go because it's, you know, $300, you know, isn't necessarily the cheapest, but it's a lot better than 450. So we were able to do that. And then like I said, they get, you know, the three-night stay at the Grand Hotel and then this, that amount also includes like their food that they'll be eating and then their entry fees for their, whatever their competition pieces are. So we would have like a really fun-filled weekend. But yeah. Questions?
Just from a timing perspective, this was received in my office shortly before the last board meeting. It should've been at the presentation on the last one. So they had two weeks from a timing mess and they consider with the board to approve it tonight, so that's very why it's not the same.
Does anybody have any questions? For Eleanor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The program starts a little later in the evening.
Yes, no, that's okay.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Next, K-12 Mathematics Curriculum Materials Presentation.
Well, I don't have students and I'm not as exciting as that, but I'll do my best So as you're aware, Richmond Community Schools has had a five-year curriculum review and assessment process review that we set in place starting last year, starting with science. And we took up the curric, the new next-generation science standards next year and we'll be looking at that in just a moment. And this year, our main focus was math. We had, we had changed our district improvement plan this year to allow us to have more departmental and grade-level meeting times this year. So last year, in, when we had specific committees looking at the science and we could not accommodate that every single teacher be contributing to it, with the change in our district improvement plan this year, we had the opportunity to review all curriculum and really concentrate on that math. So all teachers had an opportunity to fine-tune that curriculum, learn the curriculum, and look at the standards that we're teaching. We also worked with Trish Dunn and Marion Schreick from the ISD as our math consultants. In 2010, the State Board of Education adopted the new standards in math based on the Common Core State Standards. They replaced previous standards that the state had already adopted called the grade-level content or high school content expectation standards, which were passed in 2004. Richmond has been working with the standards since 2010, but we have not had the opportunity to go through and realign our curriculum perfectly to those standards since then. So I'd like to go through the realignment that we have. I'm not gonna read all of these, I'm gonna try to give you some key ideas as it goes through with each of the kindergarten, the course descriptions on each of these then pull to the main ideas that you're supposed to be learning within that content. So you'll see numbered, for example, in kindergarten curriculum, you see the 1 and 2. Those are the two big areas that, that we're concentrating on in kindergarten as standards. Now obviously, there's several standards that go along with it, but those are the main ideas that we go through. And the kindergarten teachers have broken it up into five units that cover the school year. Some overlapping because groups and numbers of 6 through 10 obviously works in 1 through 10, so they break it down in, in that standard with an overlapping period in there. Again, first grade, you can see as, as the curriculum grows, as through the grade levels, you have more main content ideas that you're looking at. In first grade, there's four main areas, developing and understanding of addition, subtraction, and strategies for addition and subtraction within 20. As you go on, you'll see that number grow larger as well, from 20 to 50 to 100, to get same ideas that we're learning, just as, as students are progressing throughout the grades, they're, they're expanding their number knowledge. So these are the units that the first-grade curriculum has laid out. The second-grade team, again, sticking with four key areas in which grade 2 needs to focus on. The four critical areas are extending and understanding of base 10 notation, building fluency with an addition and subtraction, using standard units of measure, and describing and analyzing shapes. So as you look within the units that the second-grade team has put together, you're going to see those areas that they're talking about, the building, looking at shapes as we're going through. Length and shapes, track those same ideas within those units. Third-grade curriculum, again, those four ideas, but now you see we're getting up to 100, so we're expanding that idea. That's how the, the state curriculum has, has worked, to start with that base and continue expanding and that's how our curriculum works with it. So again, you'll see the units that the third-grade curriculum has put together. Fourth grade instructional time focuses on three critical areas. However those critical areas start, you'll see those carrying up forward as we're going through. Understanding of fluency with multi-digit multiplication, developing and understanding of dividing and finding quotients. The idea within the new Michigan content is not only are we covering these, but we're going deeper as we go into each grade level as we're going through. So again, our, our course layout from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. Fifth grade with three main areas, as you can see in the course description. Again, we're getting back into shapes and now we're talking about understanding volume and starting. In fifth grade, in many of the middle school units, you'll actually see year-long units. These units are, are ideas that can tie into those mini-units. For example, in unit 6, we're talking about operations and word problems. So obviously, we want students to have a deep understanding of word problems, it's something that we can do with adding and subtracting and decimals and, and all the way through. So that's why you'll see several year-long units as we're going through. So here, again, several year-long units that tie into the different units that are Seventh grade, four critical areas again. Eighth grade, three critical areas that they were able to identify. And you can start seeing some of the unit titles lead towards that high school idea, geometry, equations, algebra, as we're preparing for the high school units of Algebra I curriculum, which is part of the high school requirements for graduation. And here's the Algebra I curriculum layout. Geometry curriculum, this is the course description that is in the course catalog for students. And the year layout for geometry. And then Algebra II. And that year layout. I'm happy to go through any of that if you have more questions, a little bit slower, I just know that some of those areas might not be the most exciting. So resources for the curriculum. The Board of Education had previously adopted math expressions for our K-5, which is completely aligned to the 2010 realignment that the state had passed. And I don't wanna make it sound as if our current resources are not, because they are, but they were not written for that realignment. Obviously, they're, were adopted before 2010. So they are able to apply, but they're not written in that fashion. With that, we are not recommending a purchase of a new resource for the K-5 curriculum at this time, but we do wanna provide some extra manipulatives to make math a little more hands-on within those. Some of the supports that go with that K-4, K-5 manipulative, and an online program to make use of the technology that we're using, it's called Mobimax, that we're, we're recommending at the elementary. In grades 6 through 8, we have the opportunity to, to adopt a curriculum that is not only aligned to the Common Core standards that we're currently using, but it works with our current instructional models that we're, we're pushing for our teachers. And, and CPM Core Connections Program is very hands-on, very student-centered, getting students to explore that math in a new level and have the opportunity to work in groups, cooperative learning like we've asked teachers to work at, to discover math. And as you can see, it's, it's written by math teachers in a fashion that they, they have worked with students to be able to do. And I have a quick video here that will explain how the program works.
professors dedicated to improving 6th through 12th grade mathematics instruction. Since 1989, CPM has provided teacher-written, problem-based instructional materials and complementary professional development to support the teachers. Recently, CPM videographers visited math teachers and students at Godina's Fundamental High School who are using the CPM curriculum.
Good afternoon, boys and girls. If you have not done so yet, open up to page 429.
I loved it. When I first learned about it, it was sort of like everything I had been looking for. The concepts are so brilliantly ordered, that they make so much sense.
You know what is nice? If you're just not quite remember it, why so weird? I just love how my students just, oh, what, even struggling students can walk in and participate in the lesson. Even if they had trouble with the previous day's lesson, there was always a way for them to interact.
In terms of what the kids are learning, they seem to attain there. And that seems to be really exciting. It's exciting for me to see that happen with the kids.
Students using the CPM Core Connection textbooks learn how to gather and organize information about problems, break the ideas into smaller parts, and look for patterns that lead to solutions.
We're doing 30 meters, 15 and 15 is 30, so we have to create those.
These strategies result in students being able to remember what they learn and understand why it works.
They're getting past, they don't know what they're doing, but CPM just goes to them and it's just like, I get it, here it is.
Students often learn in collaboration with others by discussing and persevering in solving problems.
The sector, because the sector, since you know, when I do bake.
The sector, because the sector, since you know, when I do bake, you know, it's like a poor piece of food, so it's one quarter.
Research shows that students learn ideas more deeply when they discuss ideas with classmates. While students are solving complex mathematical problems, they are also communicating their thinking, justifying their reasoning, and critiquing each other's arguments. This is a key component to learning mathematics.
Did you guys try? How did you do that, Mike?
It is common to see CPM students discussing strategies and solutions with one another, as well as presenting their work to the entire class.
They can say, hey, this is what I got. How did you start your answer? It's the students taking ownership of their learning and being in control of it.
We're giving teams a help because if I don't know the answer to something, what am I to be made?
If I need help, then I don't have to kind of like struggle and figure it out on my own. Like, I can rely on my team to help me with that.
Just do the full circle first. Do this. Yeah, like this. Just like that.
Oh, great, because I feel like I understand it, and if any help, I help, I carry my ideas.
I get to collaborate with other students, and they get to do the same, and it just makes me a more successful student.
Virtually all of the CPM teachers have found that the active, research-based approaches used in the CPM curriculum improve students' long-term success with learning mathematics.
I would never, ever use another curriculum. CPM is what we need in our math classrooms. Using the CPM app, it's helping become a more successful student.
I really think CPM app helps develop intellectual learning.
Every day, CPM students are practicing 21st century skills by collaborating and solving difficult problems while successfully learning the mathematics.
It's just, it's amazing. It's really...
I just love it. I won't go back. It's the best thing that I've ever done.
So, as the video stated, this program aligns very well with our classroom instruction at work training that we've done. It's supported by the ISD. In fact, the ISD has sent several trainers to go, and it's very highly recommended by our teachers as they looked at other programs. They're excited to have this opportunity to roll out this curriculum, or these resources, I should say. At the high school level, as we look towards those Algebra I, geometry, Algebra II courses, we looked at several different resources that are available, and the committee settled on Big Ideas Math, which is a HMH product, Holton, Mifon, Harcourt. It includes, I'll go back here, both, the high school and middle school have technology-based components, so that students will have the ability to use that on their device. And the high school program also helps with differentiation with some of the programs that they have that are on those devices for students to be able to use. Professional development. Big Ideas Math includes a Getting Started Professional Development session for teachers. So if the board chooses to accept the recommendation for these resources, we would work with teachers to set up a time to go through that Getting Started program. After they've had a semester or so to interact with the curriculum, we look to see what questions they have and see what additional professional development they might need. CPM is, as it's written by high school math teachers, they're, and it's a very different way to teach math, they have embedded coaching and professional development that's included with the adoption, with lots of hand-on opportunities for our teachers to be able to learn that curriculum through the first year of implementation. And then costs. All the costs, I want to say, are within the fiscal year 18 budget that has been presented to you right now, and Holton, Mifon, Harcourt has allowed us to spread that high school cost over three years to fit within that budget. But these would be the total, the grand totals for those programs, total, that nine through 12 total would be split over three fiscal years.
So if you recall, in the budget we presented, beginning last year, which is this current year budget, we have an allocation for curriculum renewal adoption, which might be for materials and P D and so forth. Last year, we put a lot of money into materials because our science was in need of an upgrade, if you will. As Mr. Burkhart mentioned, the large dollar amount for the high school, which is typically for high school, that's, the books are a lot more at the high school level. For no interest costs or anything, we can take that payment and agree to make it over three years to split that cost in a third, so it will fit much more in line with our annual reasonable budget that we could have for our curriculum.
The document that you do have in your attachment is about 320 some odd pages. That's all the details of each of the grade level's curriculum. So it's just input into one document.
That takes each individual unit that you saw in the unit calendars I put there, with some of the details, the big ideas, the focus questions, the vocabulary, you have to use in three of those things, what assessments were.
This would be coming for us to approve in two weeks, is that...
Correct, but it would be part of fiscal year 18's budget, not this year. So as we're talking about the budget, if we're still going to keep that line item, that's what that line item would be for. We could hold off until we actually officially approve the budget, because none of the purchase orders would come until after July 1. Am I correct, July? I think July 15th is the first one, so it could be at the two weeks, or if we want to hold off and do it in June, there's no urgency to get it done in this fiscal year budget.
So, questions and that kind of stuff?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
We wouldn't necessarily have to have them tonight, we could have them...
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I would just like to say, I had the distinct pleasure of multiple times throughout the year of participating in various grade-level department meetings, more grade levels than levels than others, but the dedication to put this together and really to have the conversation about what's working with kids in the classroom, what our teacher's seeing, really speaks volumes to the staff that we have in this district. There's a, every single group is dedicated to figure out what works for kids. And so the recommendations you see here are really collective, not just a representative, but the impact and feedback of as many teachers and administrators as we have possible to look at it, to move the district forward. So I want to thank them for all of their hard work, because this was a long process throughout the year.
All right, biology. As we discussed last year, the State Board of Education had finally accepted the new science standards. And we put together a committee last year, some of that committee carried over this year to look at biology. As last year, we adopted the K9 curriculum, because the first test for biology is expected to be our juniors, not next year, but the year after that. So we are rolling this curriculum up with our current freshmen who will be taking that first test, so that they're as prepared as possible as we're going. So this is a timeline of our current science rollout. We did K9 science review last year, we adopted the resources, you approved the new resource package, the Delta Fos kits for the elementary, the tech book for the middle school, and ninth grade physical science. This year, we looked more specifically at biology, while much of the standards and framework we had put together last year during our committee meeting, we looked at resources and how we're actually going to be teaching those standards in biology this year. And we're coming to you with a resource proposal for next year as we look at this rollout. So this is the biology curriculum course description as it is for the students. This is a lab-based course. It is a hands-on course, as the next generation science standards ask it to be. And one of the areas that we've, since we, the board has changed last year our graduation requirements in the district, we got rid of earth science and put that physical science. We've also spread some of that earth science within the physical science, the biology, and the chemistry curriculum as it relates to that curriculum as we're moving forward. So as you can see at our yearly layout of the curriculum here, you can see some of those earth ideas, the co-evolution of earth systems, but we're also going to put the biology twist in there. Obviously, you can talk about how biological systems work within that ecology, things like that, how biology and earth science work together. And that was the idea of breaking that earth science up, and also providing three solid courses that our students can take, even though the state has four courses that students are tested on, but we only have them for three years, well, two and three quarters of a year before they're tested. For resources, again, we looked at several different options. The next generation science standards, while they are new to the state of Michigan, they are not new to the country. The state of Michigan was a little slower in adopting them, so there are some out there. However, we did choose a new product that has some exciting potential and lots of technology embedded options for our students as we're looking through that and how we can use the technology that we have in our classroom. These are, again, specifically written for the Michigan standards that we now have, just as the math curriculum was. I'm not going to go through all this, but this gives you an idea of some of that technology stuff that's in there. It has field trips that we can do virtually on top of anything that we're looking at. It's got intertwined curriculum strands that we're looking at, activity-led learning, so we're starting with the activity the way the standards want you to. Instead of a teacher-directed curriculum, it's more of a student-directed curriculum in discovering science and creating those answers for themselves. Professional development, again, with the professional development, the adoption of this package, we'll have a Getting Started, we'll work with the teachers to determine what would be needed. Our anticipation might be with the technology component of this resource more than obviously the content. Same with math, just to make sure that our teachers are comfortable with the technology offerings that are available within the resource package. Costs, again, this would be included in that same proposal with HMH to be split over three fiscal years, so this amount would be divided by three, so that we can fit within that budget, that fiscal budget that we currently have. And looking, projecting three years out, we still have room to move forward with curriculum adoptions and what we need to cover. Questions on biology?
Is that a do you think for publishing companies to split it across the...
Yes and no. Publishing companies are no longer, what had previously happened and what we are able to do with our math expressions, which is an HMH product, is we're able to pay every year for what we're using. These are eight, now, publishing companies want to lock you in for a period of time. These are eight-year adoptions, so, but they want you to pay for those eight years all upfront. Most schools can't afford that. They're used to paying for a year at a time, so they're offering some sort of financing to be able to afford that adoption over eight years. By paying for this in those three fiscal years, the materials automatically are sent to us, and we have a license for eight years, even though we're only paying for the three.
You're reacting to the times when the publisher...
I would just like to thank all of the teacher committees.
Everyone has put a lot of time into this, and we're excited about the possibility of going also new resources to the curriculum that we put together. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, budget presentation.
This will probably be the shortest one for the last three, four months, you could talk about the budget. Last time we gave you an itemized budget of the worksheet. I am in the process of finalizing all the new dollars, pending the approval of one of the action items tonight. We are adjusting the dollars in next year's budget to reflect it. So, to date, I have had a couple of questions from board members, we've had to have sat down and met to discuss them. I opened that up, if there are other questions from board members in regards to specific line items or big picture dollar. I did print off just a second copy for you. Here's where we left our budget conversation at the last meeting. Though none of this has been approved by the board, it gives you a sense of where reductions or additions were going based on function codes. You can see the budget that's been presented to you to date is approximately $288,000 less expenses, still leaving our structural problem from the, if you take the $167 that we projected at the end of this year, cacked on top with the assumption of $100 per student, $276, we have a $443,000 structural problem, which is line nine on your sheet. When you go to the back page on line 36, you'll see we're still $155,000 short from eliminating the structural problem. What I, I just need to sit down with Nikki to verify the numbers is, we need to make the hard caps in there, because the hard cap cost for the district typically isn't released till the fall, but it's typically on average about a 3% increase, so we will build that 3% increase cost for the hard cap. Again, based on the action item later on, we'll put those new dollar amounts for salaries in for the budget, as well as any potential contracts that are coming up that we are currently negotiating that may be settled within the next couple of weeks. That's really, there's nothing we've hit, we want through all the function codes. You have basically a detail in that list, if you need a hard copy, I'm more than happy to print you a hard copy. But you'll see some changes in FTEs. That is strictly low person in the seniority list, that may not be the person when all the dust settles, and depending on people's situation, so that's our starting point.
Thank you. Next, Board of Education Student Representative Report.
At the elementary school, on May 19th, they're going to be having their bikes for books assembly. So eighth, third graders will be receiving brand-new bikes for accomplishing their Marches Reading Month challenge, and that'll be held by the Masonic Temple. On May 24th, the elementary school will partake in their chain tours assembly, and the money raised from that will go to support the parent club and the student council at the elementary school to help put on all the great things that they do. On May 25th, preschool graduation. And on May 26th, it's Memorial Day, so there'll be a school-wide pledge with honor guard from Selfridge, and there'll also be a PVIS end-of-the-year assembly. The middle school, the National Junior Honor Society, their inductions will be this Wednesday night at 7:00 PM in the middle school library. They're just finishing up all their MSEP testing at the middle school. Band concert, which is also the high school's band concert, they're combined, is this Thursday at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. And I heard that the high school band's doing a Michael Jackson medley, just FYI. Also, the middle school is doing a mornings for moms this Friday, so that's their event where moms are welcome to come in in the morning and celebrate for Mother's Day, this is Sunday. At the high school, John Olowski got first place at an event that the AIS holds called their AIS rodeo using new electrical boxes. Promised last Friday, and it went very well, went off without a hitch. Rachel McGoley went to California a few weekends ago to represent DECA, we heard about that. Spring concerts, like I said, the band concert is this Thursday at 7:00, and the high school choir concert is tomorrow at 7:00 in the auditorium. Next week is the seniors' last day, so it's Wednesday, year's kind of coming down to the end. Senior awards are going to be on May 18th. Senior awards are going to be on May 18th at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. Our golf team is currently second in the VUAC right now. We had a blood drive today at the high school, and it was, it was a success. It was full the entire day, so. Our creative writing class is in the process of doing something pretty cool right now. They wrote children's books, and they're combining with some of the drawing students, and they're illustrating the children's books. So, when they leave the class, they'll actually have a published book with their writing and another student's drawing. So, that's a pretty cool thing that Mr. Murphy and Ms. Belf have worked really hard to get their students together and collaborate on that. The forensics trial is this Thursday, and the forensics class had to investigate Mrs. Belf's murder, and they had to take blood samples and DNA samples. They put a lot of work into it. Everything had to be taped off, and it was done right. They followed procedure, they all had gloves on and everything. So, Mr. Murphy's going to be put on trial this Thursday for murdering Ms. Belf, so we'll see what happens. Some of the mock-trial students are taking part in it. I know I'm on prosecution, along with Jared Gill, and then Clayton Maximugan, Sophia Kessler are defense for Mr. Murphy, so we'll see what happens. So, that's this Thursday, and I believe it's first through third hour. Another cool thing going on at the high school is Richmond Idol. This is something the choir boosters decided to put together this year as a fundraiser for our choir department. And auditions are May 12th in the choir room, and students are to prepare two songs, one that you'll perform if you make it in, and then another is if you make it to the top five, then you perform your second song. So, to my understanding, we have three judges with musical background from the non-Richmond affiliated that are going to come and narrow it down to the top five. And it sounds like while the judges are doing that, we're actually going to have guest performers perform, so that's pretty neat. And so, students will actually get a golden ticket, and then the competition is June 3rd at 6:00 PM in the high school auditorium. And the top five will, the audience actually gets to vote on the winner for the next Richmond Idol. There's an app on the phone, I guess, is what I heard, and you, you just vote, and it's all tallied up at the end, so that should be pretty neat. And that concludes my report and leads us into my question.
The question that a student poses, have you ever considered starting high school billiards team? I haven't, but it's something that we, I guess we got to look into and see what the interest is, to see, I don't know if there's a billiards league out there for high schools, so we will look into it and see.
Okay. Thank you, Haley. Next Superintendent and Legislature Report.
My report is relatively short tonight. There was no public response, comments from the last board meeting to respond to. The House and Senate have both passed their respective. For the school aid fund particularly, where it is right now is they're basically going through the conference committee, which is basically each side sits down to figure what they can find some common ground in to approve. There are some amendments that have been added recently by an attempt by certain legislators to keep most of the school aid fund for K-12 purposes only, though they haven't been successful. One of them would be that online schools do not receive the same funding as a K-12, as I previously mentioned and the board members have mentioned. They don't have some of the infrastructure costs that a traditional K-12 school has, and many states fund online schools at 60% to 70% of the state foundation allowance. However, most of the budgets that we've talked about previously have been, that were approved by the House and the Senate, are primarily largely on change. It is our recommendation from, for the benefit of Richmond, that the House bill is the one that is approved. It would actually provide Richmond with a little over, over $100 per student. The Senate bill, though, would provide us $176 per student. We'd actually lose money on the reimbursement for the retirement, so it actually would cost us money in that case. So, of the three, the governors, the House and the Senate, the House bill is the one that gets Richmond, provides Richmond the best benefit of the big package, so. There's a couple bills as there's, the public probably should know. There is a shortage of, it's almost an epidemic crisis in this state regarding teachers and substitutes in all areas, and it's not just Richmond. So, there's a House Bill 4421 that would allow anybody who holds a professional license to substitute teach in a CTE class without having a teacher, going through a teacher program. House Bill 4222 would allow districts to rehire retired teachers and not have to pay into the retirement system for those retirees to bring them back as substitutes. And House Bill 4069 would actually lower the threshold. Currently, you need 90 hours of credit in the college to substitute, or an associate's degree, that would drop it down to 60 because of the desperate need for substitutes across this state. Just as a summary on negotiations update, we began negotiating with the Teamsters who represent the secretarial bargaining unit. We met last week, and again, we'll be meeting on Monday, the 22nd. We begin negotiations with the Teamsters, who represents the paraprofessionals, on May 18th. So, so far, everything looks well. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Next, items of interest from members of the board. Does anybody have anything?
I have one question. Recently, the meetings that were going on with the teachers, the format has changed. Can you explain that a little bit, Brian?
Absolutely. The first meeting that we held in March was a district-wide meeting that was held at the middle school. I think almost every board member, so I think there might have been one or two not absent or absent that one. And then from that meeting, we went down to building-level meetings to try to address concerns or issues related to specific buildings. Both of those meetings were after school, and there are some staff that, for personal reasons, time limit, maybe their code, couldn't attend those meetings. So, we're trying to move to the next level where we will identify one whole day, which I will be there, if any board member is able, in their schedule, you're more than welcome, to really sit at the building and kind of talk, whether it's on their prep time or their lunchtime, to try to get an opportunity for every staff member to have the voice in this conversation. So, that was the reason why the third set of these meetings was done during the day, so it would be during their normal workday.
And that'll take place in each individual school?
Yes. Monday is at the middle school. Thursday is the elementary school, and Friday is the high school. I might have them backwards, but it's next week. There's a day at every building.
And you'll get back with us on how the two compare and contrast, if you like. That format's better or the previous format?
I don't know necessarily about the format. I'm just trying to figure out, how do we have the conversation about dialing with staff to, if there are concerns or recommendations they may have? Again, trying to give an opportunity for all staff, not only teaching staff, but also paraprofessionals, secretaries, to have a voice in this conversation, how we can improve the district. But I'll definitely get back with you in terms of what the outcome of those were.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, next, this public comment, portion of our meeting we have. If someone would like to address the board, they may come up to the podium. There's a card there for your name and phone number if you have a question that you need answered. It is not a question-and-answer period, but you are welcome to address the board. If you do so, you have three minutes to speak. Anyone?
I might need the chair. I have two things. My name's Teresa Ranger. I'm a teacher at the elementary school, and I would love to give a shout-out to our PTO group. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. They outdid themselves. Every day, the PTO ladies did something extraordinary for us. We were, felt so appreciated between lunches and Post-it notes and flowers on our desks and just, there was a raffle, I won a beach bag, and, I mean, but they, and they, they had our students, they got a letter, a note to them if they wanted to write something about their teacher, and then the PTO moms separated all of these hundreds of nice written, handwritten notes from our students, rolled them up and fastened them and put them in our mailbox. They went above and beyond to make us feel appreciated and that, hey, that's what this is all about. So, hats off to the PTO. They really did an outstanding job. We appreciate it. In addition to that, I am the REA president, and each year, the REA awards senior students with scholarships for them to use as they pursue higher education. So, any senior at the high school is, they can apply, and then we have a scholarship committee that screens the applications, and then they choose the recipients. So, those seniors will be given those scholarships at the award ceremony next week. But in addition to the seniors this year, the REA would like to recognize and award Haley Fortuna. We understand Haley is pursuing a summer leadership program. It sounds, number one, very ambitious and very exciting. I understand it's political science?
Yeah.
And so, we would like to help you with a little bit of the cost that goes with it. Haley is a junior, but she's a hard-working, well-deserved, we feel well-deserved recipient, so we would like to award you this, and good luck in that endeavor.
Thank you very much.
Good for you, Haley.
Thank you.
Yep.
It's three weeks at University of Chicago, is that right?
Yes, three weeks at the University of Chicago, and I'll have classes 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Monday through Friday.
Very good, sounds very exciting.
Sure does. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? Okay, moving on to our action items. First one is the approval of the master agreement between Richmond Board of Education and MEA/NEA Local One, Richmond Education Association. Brian, did you want to say something?
In your packet, you will see the complete master agreement that was reached tentatively April 24th. It finalized the details on Wednesday, April 26th. It was ratified by the Richmond Education Association on Thursday, April 27th. Your packet, you will see, as I said, the complete packet. It has the additional language, which is bold and underlined, that's now new to the contract. It has strike-through language, which in some cases had to be removed because of current laws that were passed by legislation. It also has in the contract the calendar for the next two years, which mimics this year's calendar. And it also has in there, I think, part of the big, or not a big component, but there's an evaluation instrument in there for certain individuals in the organization. Article four in the contract has been rewritten to represent members in the REA that do not fall under the Teacher Tenure Act, that certain subjects that most of the membership is a prohibited subject of bargaining, for these members, they can still bargain those topics, one of them being evaluation, notice of placement, et cetera. So, you have the complete packet. The financial package, you will see in Schedule A in the contract, as well as on an attachment. This contract, there is a cost, what you have here, and I do not have any of the individual names listed on here, but this gives you a summary of the three years. Every teacher, regardless of their position in the district, gets something every year in this contract. The green, which is 2016-17, the increase is one of their furlough days returned. So, you can see what a current teacher was making and what their new salary would be making and what the increase would be in that percentage. So, for the 16-17 school year, for this year's budget, we will be adding an expense of, there's 81 teachers, approximately $35,000 that is not currently in the budget. So, when Vicky brings you the budget in June, you will see that expense. In the 17-18 school year, those that are on steps, which is a matrix, they will get a half a step. In this case, there are 42 individuals in the organization that will get a half step. In addition, they will get one of their furlough days back. Again, the first column represents what their salary would have been after the day and then what it would be going forward, and then the amount of dollars by individual. Again, for next year's budget, I will be putting into an expense of $123,000 in costs, if I assume all, we have 81 teachers next year. Again, there's a lot of assumptions because some of these teachers now, with the settlement of the contract, would now qualify for lane changes, which I can now honor. The current law prohibits the district from paying a teacher any more dollars than they made when the contract expired. So, we have a handful of teachers that were caught in the middle of this in terms of they received their steps or their increase or their lane changes for additional colleges that we couldn't honor because we had to settle the contract. In year three, those that are on the steps still will get another half step. Those that are at the top, which in this scenario, there are approximately 44 teachers at the top, will get a one-time off-schedule payment of $500, which equates to about, about a day's pay when you look at the furlough day. So, in FY 18-19 school year, we would have approximate expenses with 81 teachers of about $110,000 in new expenses in the FY 19 budget. So, there were some that, I'll just say, every teacher gets something every year of the contract. I want to thank the bargaining teams of not only the REA, but our district team. There were many, many hours of going back and forth, and I believe the turning point came in that 11th hour, when we were here till 1:00 in the morning and then came back because there was a need on both sides of the organization to settle the contract with what we fiscally could do. I will say this again, and I believe I can echo the board, if I had more money sitting here, I believe every individual in this organization deserves more. The challenge we have is, as I've talked about in the budget, they're bickering over $100, which isn't even the cost of inflation in the state. And $100 is 1% of our basically state aid payment, roughly, a little bit more, but it's about a 1%. So, that is a challenge we face to maintain programs and services. So, if there are any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. Otherwise, it's my recommendation that the Board of Education approve the contract with the REA and Local One.
Thank you, Brian. There's a sample resolution?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the master agreement between the Richmond Board of Education and MEA/NEA Local One, Richmond Education Association, for the term September 1, 2016 through August 31, 2019, as presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
She said the whole word.
Okay. It has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? I would like to say that the law now states that I have a conflict of interest, so I am unable to vote on the contract.
I, as well, have to recuse myself because of a conflict of interest.
So, just so everybody knows, the way the law's written, the board is now a quorum of four, and you need a majority, or, excuse me, five, and you need a majority of that five to pass the contract.
Any other discussion? Okay. I'm going to do a roll call. Sarah?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Opposed? No, I don't do opposed because I did a roll call. Okay, 5-0, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, approval of overnight trip for the forensics convention. We had our presentation earlier from Eleanor Schmidt, and there is a sample resolution.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the overnight trip to MSCI Forensic Convention as presented during the Board of Education meeting and in the attached documentation.
Second?
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
I have been to this event before, and it's quite awesome. So, just the opportunity to be at the Grand Hotel is quite something, but just to see all of the kids very excited and have the opportunity to compete and that, it's just great, so.
I am very excited.
Are you going?
I am going, yeah. I've never been to McDonald's before.
Oh, gosh. Bring that clutch, please.
Okay, it has been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session for a disciplinary hearing for student number 050817A. I got Kyle.
I'll go to Kyle.
Support.
We're supported. It's been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Mrs. Michonne, will you?